Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Reyes.
Present.
Counselor De Peña.
Present.
Counsel Rodriguez. Counselor Abdou.
Present.
Counselor Ortiz. Counselor Maldonado.
Present.
Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez. Counselor LaPlante.
Present.
And Counsel President Vasquez.
Present. Please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. Now please join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have now public participation. Please remember that you will have two and a half minutes to speak. Please address the city council as a whole, do not address any individual councilors. When you hear the first bell, that means that you've spoken for two minutes. By the time you hear the second bell, your time is up. Please identify yourself with a name and address for the record, please. First person, Francis Cilek.
Kendrick Vasquez in the city council. My name is Francis Cilek. I live in the great city of Lawrence, 245 Broadway, apartment 7. Patricia Dowling's picture is, shouldn't be like that. It's wrong. I don't know why they left it like that. It should be fixed, full, like all the other pictures are. It's a disgrace to women, frankly. That's the way I feel. And Willie Lantigue was elected mayor 2013. He should be up there too. We need a shelter in South Lawrence, 1.2 million. We kicked out all the homeless people underneath the bridge. We should've. We catered the people too much. We gotta, we gotta go halfway with them. We have to build a shelter in South Lawrence, 1.2 million. And 50 people can go out there. We don't want anybody to freeze to death. We don't want, we need the churches, we need the people, we gotta be all together. Nobody's gonna freeze to death.
Mr. Cilek, please speak to them.
I can speak to them too, if I want, alright? Amazon should go at the airport. 50,000 jobs. The old Western Electric shouldn't be a marijuana farm. 50,000 jobs, think of it. We can do it. Let's do it. Let's do it. Fix the garbage can at Lawrence and Essex Street, right in front of Salt and the Bank. It's been like that for three years. Fix the bench there. It's been like that for two years. The curbing is right on Lawrence and Essex. Let's do things. We can get things done. Everybody's got ideas. Bring them your ideas. We can solve every problem, we can do it. Let's do it together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Mr. H. Mali.
Good evening, honorable members. In this important election year, we the citizen demand of you and Mayor Rivera support our police department and their union. Our police department under impeccable leadership of Honorable Chief Fitzpatrick has done excellent job to protect our citizens, support our police department and senior officers' union. Mayor Rivera must sign our police officers' contract. Our public school under impeccable leadership of Honorable Superintendent Raleigh has become the best public school in the nation. Mayor Rivera last four years has not done a great job to create a safe city and safe Lawrence. Last four years, we had more than 33 deaths. Police department with the budget of $12 million cannot prevent all these murders. Mayor Rivera must go to Governor Baker, ask for National Guard presence in Lawrence. Mayor Rivera destroy our police department last four years. Mayor Rivera appoint somebody such as Pat Ruse in inspection department that continuously harass our homeowner by imposing illegal fine and drag the homeowner to the housing court. Mayor Rivera must fire such a people. Mayor Rivera need to answer to the Paulino family that discovered the decapitated body of their son and report their son missing one week before. Mayor Rivera has not fire any of the police officers. In the last hours in this city hall, we demand of Mayor Rivera sign our police officers' contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Rich Russell.
Good evening, councilors. Name's Dick Russell, 34 Cross Street. Short speech, nothing written down. First of all, congratulations on all of yous for a successful last Tuesday. I'd like to thank the city for doing a good job in repaving a lot of the major thorough affairs. Market Street, Apaka Street. Market Street does need to be done, from South Union down to Relief Inn. It's a bumpy ride after the council meeting going down there. Now, last thing. This morning I got up, I go up to the top of Cross Street, I pull a U-turn on Franklin. Can somebody explain to me what the necessity of a dotted white line down the middle of Franklin Street from Cedar Street down to Havrell Street is? It's a narrow roadway. It narrow, it widens out once you cross Havrell Street. I can see it. But Franklin Street, that portion that I mentioned from Havrell and Cedar will not sustain two vehicles wide. To me, it was a waste of paint, waste of time, unless it was practiced. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Next person is Michelle Paletta.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Michelle Paletta, 198 Essex Street, apartment 101, in the city. I hesitate to bring this up, but it's been going on for so long. In 2008, the city has been sued the ADA issues. They were taken to court again for ADA issues. To this day, they are still noncompliant. I don't know why. They can't say they don't have the money. This is a federal agency. The ADA is for people that are handicapped, disabled, you name it. And we are getting absolutely nothing from the city. As far as places to go, as far as having things fixed. I had to fight for years just to get the hearing thing so that we could hear in the city. I fought for a lot of things, including getting the commission going. And that's going nowhere because our mayor has not been very helpful in getting the commission to go. We know that we need to have someone that is in charge of it. And I had even suggested we get someone part-time as opposed to having nobody. This is a very important committee in the city. The ADA Commission is very important in this city, in any city. And if we don't have the city council, and the mayor, and other people help us to keep it going, it's gonna fail. And it's going to fail every ADA person in this city. And I'll leave it at that because I don't wanna say anymore.
Thank you, Ms. Paletta. Next person is Joe D'Amico.
Joe D'Amico, 11 Lorenzo Road. When you woke up this morning, did you know if you, did you see the yellow lines on your street? The reason why they put them there is for way of life. People won't drag race if they, there's a double sided line. If a cop comes by, they can tag them. The other thing is today, you know that the state of New York is looking at the way we run our schools. They're frontifying, they're following the same way that our receivership has been doing. Schools have raised their graduation numbers and scores and increased school kids graduating. And on a new note, Governor Baker was in town today. Him and Mayor Rivera visited the Lawrence Public Schools to celebrate the college pathway kickoff, in which allows 200 high school students to take courses at Merrimack College in Northern Essex, Community College. Again, just got publicized. Not sure if anybody else has heard from, about it. But the governor came in, which is another good boost to the city of Lawrence. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amico. Next person is Jeffrey Petrello.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Jeffrey Petrello, and I reside at 341D South Broadway. I want to continue forward subsequent to the last committee meeting we had last Thursday to touch upon a few things that have come to pass from over the past weekend. Our neighbor has, has had his attorneys out on the property, surveying the property from an eyeballing point of view, where they are going to install their fence, and again at 5:00 PM, 5:00 PM this evening. Secondly, our family for 28 years has never had to put up with this sort of nonsense that's now going on. Third, how does Mr. Memlo figure he can put a fence of any kind when for over 40 years, Paul Martino Sr., who owned the Body Shop before Mr. Memlo, was never allowed to do so by any building commissioners such as Louise Ferris and Bob Quimby? Furthermore, city officials are telling us that we cannot do anything to Mr. Memlo until he parks cars and stores cars on that vacant unpermitted lot. What we perceive that is like telling us to be reactive, as opposed to being proactive. We for one don't wish to be reactive, to wait and see what Mr. Memlo plans on doing. And I want to point something out to you that I saw this past weekend in the Eagle Tribune. $274.5 million awarded to, in Gill's suit lawyer. Decision is the largest personal injury decision in this state history. I like, I'd like to ask the city councilors, do you really believe that the winners of this lawsuit stood back, stood back and waited to see what Mr. Gill was gonna do? No, I don't think so. And this is proof. Finally, if the city officials are saying, we'll stop Mr. Memlo from parking and storing cars on that residentially zoned lot that's unpermitted, after he puts up his fence, et cetera, et cetera, the patrols would like to remind the city councilors that he has been parking and storing cars on this lot illegally for the past five to six weeks. And despite city and zoning laws 29-11, he has been allowed to do so every day, including weekends. I'll just be a few more moments before I finish. Thus, we ask, how do you intend on getting Mr. Memlo to remove these eight to 10 vehicles he illegally parks and stores on this vacant lot seven days a week, when he now doesn't have a fence? So what are you gonna do after he erects his fence if he's given the permission to do so?
Thank you, Mr. Petrello.
Okay? Thank you very much. I think I made my point.
I am now submitting these names to the record. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Councilors, now moving on with public hearings. We have document 31117, which is the MSBA Oliver Partnership School borrowing authorization placed on the agenda by Mayor Dan Rivera. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 311, 2017, notice is hereby given. The city council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017, in council chambers, 200 Common Street at 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning consideration for the authorization of Lawrence City Council upon the following loan order. In order to authorize the funding and feasibility study for the Oliver Partnership School as voted by the Oliver Partnership Elementary School Building Committee on August 29th, 2017, to move following order to the city council. This order is the next phase of the Oliver Partnership School building process. To be ordered, that the city appropriate the amount of $4 million for the purpose of paying costs of the feasibility study of the Oliver Partnership School located at 183 Havrell Street in Lawrence, Massachusetts, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto in a feasibility study, and for the city, and for which the city may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the set amount to be expended at the direction of the Oliver Partnership Elementary School Building Committee. That the city acknowledges that the MSMA's program is a nonentitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And any feasibility study costs the city incurs in excess of the grant approved by the received, by and received from the MSBA, for the feasibility studies shall be set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed by the city and MSBA. And that the amount of borrowing authorized by the city shall be reduced by the grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement and may be executed by the city and MSBA. Further orders providing compliance with General Law Chapter 4420A as published, and further authorization to the treasurer to file application with the appropriate officials for the Commonwealth to qualify under Chapter 44A of the general laws as published on September 22nd.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Is there anyone, anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on this subject? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Councilors, what's your motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion has been made.
Second.
There's a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Abstain.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counselor Reyes.
Abstain.
Noted. Counselor De Peña.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Abdou.
Yes.
Counselor Ortiz.
Yes.
Counselor Maldonado.
Yes.
Counselor Alvarez Rodriguez, noted. Counsel Vice President LaPlante.
Yes.
And Counsel President Vasquez.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next document is document 31217. Bond authorization for MSBA accelerator repair projects. Roof a North Common Education Complex on the amount of $4.5 million. Boiler at the Arlington School, $1.5 million. Roof at the Arlington School, $2.3 million. This was placed on the agenda by Mayor Dan Rivera. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 312, 2017. Notice is hereby given. The city council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 3rd, in council chambers at 200 Common Street, 7:00 PM. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning consideration for the authorization of Lawrence City Council upon the following loan order. A loan order to authorize funding of the Community Day Arlington Roof and Boiler Replacement in School for Exceptional Studies Roof Repair Projects, accepted by the Massachusetts School Building Authority into, into the authority's accelerated repair program as of May 12th, 2017. The order to encompass the following amounts, that the city appropriate the amount of $3,800,000 for the purpose of paying costs of boiler and roof replacement at the Community Day Arlington School located in Arlington Educational Complex at 150 Arlington Street, and $4,500,000 for the purpose of paying costs for the roof replacement at the School for Exceptional Studies located at the North Common Exceptional Educational Complex at 233 Havrell Street in Lawrence. Including the payment of all costs incidental related to these projects, which proposed repair projects would be materially extended to the useful life of the schools and preserve the assets that would otherwise are capable of supporting the required educational programs for the city of Lawrence as applied for a grant through the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Set amounts to be expended under the direction of the school committee. To meet these appropriations, the city treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow the amounts as permitted under General Law Chapter 44 or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The city acknowledges that the MSBA grant program is a nonentitlement and discretionary program based upon need as determined by the MSBA. And if the MSBA board directors votes to invite the city to collaborate with the MSBA on this proposed repair project, any project cost, the city incurs in excess of any grant that may be approved by or received by the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility, the city provided that if invited to collaborate with the MSBA on the proposed repairs, be the sole responsibility of the city. Provided that if invited to collaborate with the MSBA on the proposed repair projects, the amount of each borrowing authorized pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount for the respective projects set forth in the project fund agreement that may be executed between the city and the MSBA. Further additional authorizations presented pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 20 of the Mass General Laws, and further orders that the treasurer be authorized to file applications with appropriate officials of the Commonwealth to qualify for Chapter 44A funds of the general laws for all bonds, and the city authorized to borrow pursuant to the loan order, as published on the 22nd of September, in the, in the print media.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on this item? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Councilors, what's your motion?
I can make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Councilors, we have three documents that I will request that we take out of order, if you think that that will be fair. It's the personnel committee reports. We have three appointments, and I think those will be relatively quick. For the most part, Mr. Chair from the Personnel Committee. Documents 327, 328, 329. Can I please get a motion to get them out of order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. Chair from the Personnel Committee.
Mr. President, we met on, the Personnel Committee met on September 27th on three items. The first item is item 32717, the appointment of the Water Commissioner. Mayor Rivera sent down the name of Brian Peña. It was in short order. The committee was supportive of Mr. Peña. As most people know, he was formerly our Water Commissioner. He left, he performed admirably in Tewksbury, came back, and received the unanimous vote by the committee to recommend, favorably recommend to the full council his appointment to Water Commissioner.
Is that info?
That's in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none.
Discussion.
Discussion, Counsel Ortiz.
I would like to ask Mr. Brian Peña to come up to the podium.
Mr. Peña.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Good evening.
Can you just share briefly a little bit of, of what you've been doing in the time that you've been away? I know that you shared it with the committee, but just for the, the benefit of the full council, and for the people here that, that don't necessarily know how wonderful you are.
Oh, well, thank you. Appreciate that. I don't, I don't know if I'm necessarily wonderful, but I appreciate it. So I spent the last 13 months working for the town of Tewksbury as the water.
I'm sorry, just, can you just say your name and, just for the record?
It's Brian Peña.
And you can do 200 Common Street, it's fine.
Yeah, 200 Common Street, Lawrence. I've spent the last 13 months working as the Water and Sewer Superintendent for the town of Tewksbury. It's a much smaller town, but I oversaw, can, you know, oversee the operation of the drink and water treatment plant, the water distribution center, including all of the storage facilities onsite, and the wastewater collection system, including 46, 47 pump stations. So it's very similar in, in size as the system here. Different challenges altogether, so I've had a lot of experience now working with pump stations, where Lawrence has four pump stations, I'm working now with 47 pump stations. The water system's a little newer than the city of Lawrence, but with its own challenges in that it's asbestos cement pipe, so it's prone, a lot more prone to breaking at all, all times of the year versus your cast iron, 100-year-plus cast iron pipe here in the city. So had a, just a wealth of experience working with a different system. You know, all information that I'm going to be bringing with me back to the job, hopefully, with your support.
Thank you so much for that overview. I, I know that we had a robust conversation with Mr. Peña at the Personnel Committee. He, he shared the time that he's spent in Tewksbury and the benefit of having that time of experience, and some of the ideas of what he learned over there that he was gonna implement and add to his already extensive experience and expertise. Thank you so much, Mr. Peña.
Thank you, Counsel Ortiz. Counsel Vice President LaPlante.
Very simple question, Mr. Peña. Welcome back, and thank you for applying. Why did you leave Lawrence to go to Tewksbury and then want to go from Tewksbury back to Lawrence again?
Good question. And I guess it's twofold. I left Tewksbury because it offered a, a really unique opportunity to work in a new position. It was a brand-new position, newly created, had the opportunity to make it my own and help the, the town actually mold the water and sewer division as sort of a, sort of a standalone division under direct supervision of a dedicated person, whereas it's been someone who has been the superintendent of all public works, hasn't been able to give it that focus. So it was a really exciting opportunity, and I definitely do not regret having taken the opportunity. the opportunity. One of the things that has brought me back to Lawrence has been a few things. Number one is that there have been a number of changes in the city, you know, the hiring of a DPW director, there's a new city engineer, people that I know that I would actually work really well with them, so I'm, you know, very excited for that. And then quite frankly, it's my city, I miss it, you know, I grew up drinking the water, my nephews and nieces are now growing up drinking the water, and I want to make sure that I have a role to play in the city, so I'm very excited to be back here.
Thank you. Counsel Rodriguez.
Sure, thank you so much. Brian, thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
The city really need, really need a young leader like you and many others that have joined the city. I'm happy because the city of Lawrence now have three civil engineers in place with a license, PE license, and I'm glad that you came back because it's going to be a team, a team effort to move the city forward. And I'm going to ask you any question, I just have that comment to you and the public that is here, that the city now have a team to be able to serve the community in the proper way with knowledge and the desire. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rodriguez. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you.
I got a problem on my street.
Next document is document two, three twenty-eight seventeen. Mr. Chair from the Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, the mayor sent down item number three twenty-eight seventeen, the appointment, it's actually a reappointment of Mr. Stephen Cefori from Lawrence Housing Authority. Mr. Cefori, as most know, is a former president of this council, has spent well over two decades in service to this city, and it was with a unanimous vote of the Personnel Committee to recommend to this council, the favorable recommendation of Mr. Stephen Cefori for reappointment to Lawrence Housing Authority. I submit that in the form of a motion.
Second. Has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none.
Discussion.
Discussion, Counsel Ortiz.
Thank you. Is Mr. Cefori here this evening?
Mr. Cefori is here.
Thank you. If you could come up to the podium.
Counselor Cefori. Once a counselor, always a counselor, huh?
Feels like I never left.
Thank you so much for being here this evening. If you could just share a little bit of what you shared with us at the Personnel Committee and why you're looking to be reappointed to this position.
Sure. Good evening, Counselors. Basically, this is, this term I just completed was a partial term. I like the opportunity to serve a full term, and the city here, I lived there my whole life, and obviously I have a deep passion and love for it, and I want to continue to serve in some way. So I have some expertise in the housing area, I'd like to offer whatever that expertise is to help with the Housing Authority and continue the great job they've been doing. Affordable housing is a massive issue across the state, especially in a city like Lawrence, and providing a safe environment for people where it's affordable. And I think it's important, you know, for all of us to continue to, I think I mentioned to you in the subcommittee about civic engagement and involvement. So I wish there were more of it, and I wish they taught it in school like they don't anymore. And it's in your blood, I think you can relate to that. Once you do it, you, most of us enjoy doing it. But I have some skills in the procurement area, managing budgets, I served on a housing board, I mediated cases for the Attorney General, landlord tenant, so I'd like to be helpful to the executive director and the management there and help them continue to do a fantastic job that they're doing now.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next document. Mr. Chair from the Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On September twenty-seventh, the Personnel Committee voted by unanimous vote the favorable recommendation of Bridget Rodding to the full city, the full council. I submit that in the form of a.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. Any discussion?
Discussion.
Discussion, Counsel Ortiz. Counsel Abdu.
I would just submit, a point of information, I left a piece out of the motion, so I don't know how to do this appropriately, other than withdraw it and resubmit it, correct?
What, so your motion was?
I don't believe I said what she was being appointed to, did I?
Pointed to the Cultural Council.
Yeah, to the Cultural Council, yes.
Yeah.
Stand corrected.
Yeah.
Stand corrected.
We've made eye contact. Thank you so much for being here this evening. Before she, Ms., can you pronounce your last name for me?
Rodding.
Rodding? Rodding. Speaks, I would like everyone to know for the record that she jumped right into getting involved in the city after only ten months of buying her home here in Lawrence. And she just, and I don't want to take away your thunder, but that still, that still resonates with me, that still resonates with me. So thank you so much for being willing to serve, and just share a little bit of why you would like to be a part of the Cultural Council.
Sure, so yeah, I became a late blooming first-time homeowner in Lawrence about a year ago, and was at the new homeowners' open house, and I talked to Pat Mariano there, and she, just afterwards, we started chatting, and she told me about the Cultural Council. I have, you know, kind of a lifelong passionate commitment to the value of arts and cultural events for bringing communities together, so it was an interest of mine. I was looking for a way to give back to the community, and that seemed like a good option for me. So again, my personal interest, my career has been mostly in higher education, academic libraries, so I have personal experience with grant work, reading them, writing them, reviewing them, also committee work, you know, I've done that a lot in my career, and also as a member of North Parish in North Andover, I was served on committee, so I'm familiar with kind of the taking the work home with you. I have been attending Cultural Council meetings since last June, so I already am kind of familiar with the scope of the work and how it functions, and I just feel like I have skills that I can bring to this committee, and again, just my true commitment to wanting to bring, to facilitate and develop cultural events within the community.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Thank you so much. I still have the floor.
Do you have more questions, Counsel?
Yeah, only thank you so much.
Counsel Ortiz.
So with that, what are you hoping to, I understand you have your experience, so what are you hoping to add, or your first thing that you would like to do on the Cultural Council?
Well, I haven't been through a grant cycle yet with them, so it's hard, I feel like it's a hard question to answer, not really knowing the full scope of the committee, but, you know, I think that bringing my expertise in, as I said, I think, last week, you know, I kind of have a good sense when I'm looking at a grant of whether or not a person, you know, has a clear path to how they can see a project through. So I'm hoping, I think they've been successful with that in the past, honestly, it seems like a pretty well-running council, so, but I think I can bring that skill to it and find ways to make sure that the grants we allow, that we pass will be the most effective ones for the community. I know there's a different way they're kind of doing the grant process this year, so I'm interested in hearing about that because the way they're doing it now seems more in line with what I've done before, so I think I can bring that experience too, because that's a new, a change in how the councils, how the statewide council is looking at grant opportunities, so.
Thank you.
Counsel Rodriguez.
Sure. Thank you, Counsel President, through you. Thank you for applying and wanted to serve the community. It is important to, for the people to understand that those councils are available for the people to serve, and this is a way to actually serve the community. For all those people up there that are, that wanting to serve the city of Lawrence, I would like to encourage them to do the same as you did, because this is how we're going to make a difference. Serving the community, this is all about service, and once you serve the community, you feel proud about the community, and there is so many boards, so many councils, so many other positions that need volunteers, that need people to come over and give some time to the city as you are doing it. I highly appreciate your effort, your time, and dedication to the community, to the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel LaPlante.
Thank you very much, Counsel President. First of all, welcome.
Thank you.
So a couple things caught my eye. You're right down the street from me.
I am.
Welcome to the neighborhood, and thank you, as the Counsel from District A mentioned, didn't take you long to try to get your feet wet, and if School Committee Woman Mariano was here, I also want to thank her for bringing this candidate, Ms. Rodding, to the attention of those who have the authority to bring her name down, so thank you, School Committee Woman, Pat Mariano. You're well-educated. You went to, graduated from Boston College, and then went to graduate school at Simmons College at Southern New Hampshire University, and then I'm going to read very quickly your experience on your application. You say you're a twenty-plus-year career in academic and public libraries, experienced teaching and writing at Merrimack College, you also have experience in writing and reviewing grant applications, and not only that, but you've been involved already in the community cooking for Bread and Roses through the North Parish in North Andover, so on all these different things, and you don't, you're not going to get a salary for this, there's no stipend. This is truly public service, this is selfless, this is your time, this is a commitment, and thank you for making that effort and making it known, and so quickly wanted to be a part of the fabric of our community, so I'm really going to be happy to support you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Counselors, we're going to go back to the top of the agenda, but before I order the City Clerk to call for the public hearing, I do want to point out that former City Counselor Julia Silverio is with us as well tonight, so thank you for joining us, Counselor Silverio. Mr. Clerk, document two eighty-six seventeen, local option prohibited in recreation of marijuana, placed on the agenda by Counsel Maldonado. Please read the notice.
Document two eighty-six, two thousand seventeen, notices hereby given the City Council will hold a public hearing Tuesday, October third, in Council Chambers, seven P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a proposed amendment to revise ordinances for the city of Lawrence by adding, to be amended by adding the following new section to chapter five point eight four, Regulation of Marijuana or Cannabis Establishments to the Municipal Code, to be inserted in proper order. Section, proposed section five point eight four oh one oh, Regulation of Marijuana and Cannabis Establishments, the operation of all types of marijuana or cannabis establishments as defined by general law chapter ninety-four G, section one, including marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, dispensaries, laboratories, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related business is prohibited within the city of Lawrence, to the extent there exists any other ordinances to the contrary, they are hereby repealed to that respect only. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity, as published September twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard? Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Council. My name's Richard Russell, I live at thirty-four Cross Street, and I speak tonight as a citizen of Lawrence. On November eighth, two thousand and sixteen, question number four was voted on. Total of twenty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-seven voters, fifty-five percent of the registered voters in Lawrence voted on this issue. They voted thirteen thousand six hundred and seventy-seven in the negative, nine thousand eight hundred and ninety in the positive, a difference of thirty-seven hundred and eighty-seven votes. Fifty-eight percent of the people that voted, voted against marijuana, the sale of recreational marijuana in the city. I think it is imperative on you to follow the wishes of the voters of November eighth on two thousand and sixteen. Thank you.
Ms. Hope Lutter, one ninety-eight Essex Street, I am definitely a proponent of not having this go through. I have twenty-seven years clean from drugs, alcohol, smoking. It was not easy, but what started me on it was marijuana recreation. Let me tell you, after a while, it is not an recreation, it is a habit, and I can tell you from experience that there is nothing but positive that could come out of this. So please, listen to your people, listen to your hearts, do not allow this in the city. We have enough problems with people that have addictions, and it only escalates if it starts with marijuana. Thank you.
Good evening, Counselors. Thank you. My name is Jose Rodriguez, I'm a former case manager for DMH, Department of Mental Health in Massachusetts, in Lawrence's office. I worked there for twenty years with mentally ill adults, so I also hold a master's degree in psychology from Springfield College, Massachusetts. So first of all, I want to thank you, you all, for your vote last July, it was a very responsible vote, and I think it was very thoughtful from you about voting, no on that time. I just want to give some facts about cannabis. So around four hundred chemicals compound in, you can find in an average marijuana plant, some of them are called delta nine TH and CBD as well. Why I need to know that? However, when your doctor tell you that you need to have a low-salt diet, so you have to read the label and see the compound or that, so same thing with marijuana. So apart of the, just one component, those are very psychoactive. Why that means? So that if person smoke marijuana, so those components enter to bloodstream, and they go to your brain, another part of your body. So what that means, not only go to your brain and your body, but also they induce hallucinations and delusions. I got to be some fact, some study made in United Kingdom, France, Australia, has demonstrated, like one in France, has demonstrated that ten thousand drivers prior to, has been smoking marijuana, were involved in car crash. Also, in Australia has been done studies in that sixty hundred children between age fourteen and seventeen, for seven years, they developed schizophrenia and bipolar disorders. But we don't need to go so far Europe or Australia, we just go to our own city. As I said, working for twenty years in Lawrence for Department of Mental Health, I've found that our city, so they develop also mental problems, but meaning that, so having the selling cannabis in our city, that will increase the problem, low performance in school for children, and also increase of, in substance abuse induced, mental ill. So, and tonight, my petition to you is that respectfully. So, and tonight, my petition to you is that respectfully, to keep your vote on zero marijuana in Lawrence due to those fact that will not only increase the mentally ill in our population, but also a low-performance school for our children. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good afternoon. My name is Eddie Casado, and I reside on 130 Franklin Street. And I'm here basically to reiterate my previous stand on, I'm coming before your presence to express my opposition against the establishment of recreational marijuana in Lawrence. I've resided in Lawrence for the past five years. I've moved around the country somewhat. But my career, my job's been in the substance abuse area, basically because of my personal history with it and taking those demise and going to college and learn, educate myself in the field. And now being in Lawrence and making a difference in the community in which I reside, it's important that, for me, to give back to the community of Lawrence, now that I reside here. And I'm working, and I wanna see more ramping of the image of Lawrence. I've doing a lot of outreach in the community, not enough, still room for improvement. So, in working in the community, I owe it to myself to come here and express the opposition on any establishment that has to do with marijuana. I read both sizes of the spectrums. I understand it, being a previous user. If I was still using it, I would be defending it. But being that I'm on this side of the fence, and being based upon my experience, I'm voting no against it based upon my experience. And I respect other people's rights. I respect their opinions. But I have a right to express mine. And for the record, I'm against it. And I understand that as some councilmen and women, that you have your own opinions, and sometimes we don't get to hear them as much as we would like to. But I appreciate the process. And I started this process, and I'm continuing to step fast in this process until I, we see a positive outcome being no. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maria De La Cruz. I represent the Neighborhood Association in the community. We already have so many problems with the opioid, killing so many people in our community. It's not a guarantee that we're gonna have a police in front of every location or place that the marijuana is gonna be sold, because we don't have a lot of policemen in the community. Our neighborhoods are already handling so many issues. We have a lot of kids coming out of school before time at the age of 16. We have single parents dealing with this situation. We have kids with no jobs. I believe our neighborhood doesn't need any of those kind of problem of marijuana being open in our community. And I think it has been taking such a long time to decide that we need to conclude this question today. No more, no marijuanas vendors in our community. I have granddaughters in the community, and I don't want them to be taking cookies, Oreo cookies, or whatever herbals that they being creating with the marijuana. In other words, it is going to be one less problem that we will have in our community. Thank you.
Name an address for the record, please.
Hello, how you doing? Stephen Gill, 8 Boyd Street. I don't think I'll get the applause that the young lady got, because I think I'm probably gonna be the only pro person in this crowd who actually speaks. My name is Stephen Gill. I'm finishing up my masters in, as a nurse practitioner. I also hold a degree, a bachelor's degree in biology and a minor in psychology. I've been in the nurse, I've been a healthcare practitioner in the city of Lawrence for the last 20 years. And I also sit as vice chair of the Board of Health of the city of Lawrence. Marijuana actually became medical marijuana the first time in 1996 in California. We're about 20-something years behind the times. To tell you the history of marijuana, it's actually pretty funny. In the 1940s, they came out with the marijuana craze. And what they really wanted to do is they found the hemp, actually the stem of the marijuana is mixed much better paper and actually better clothing, and it's much stronger than cotton. So, they actually made it illegal to protect that industry. It is funny now that the top or the flower will actually get you, as they say, high. And all marijuana products don't get you that sort of high, because the CBD products actually help with arthritis and many other medical aspects. And I could tell you, everybody in this room has not visited other states that medical marijuana is legal, like Colorado or Washington. So, there's tons of studies that say pro. I can tell you tons of studies that say against it. It's actually a relatively new drug, and I think there's gonna be a world of cures that's gonna come out of the marijuana plant, speaking as a practitioner. Marijuana is sold in many corners of the city. The only difference is we're not making any money out of it. Marijuana cookies are available everywhere. You can actually go online, and they will deliver to your house. It's there. There are filters that, when you filter your coffee in the morning, it will give you marijuana. Except that or not, it's here. The only difference is, are we gonna make money on it? Are we gonna shut down industries that can come in and actually create jobs? It's here. As a medical professional, as a long-term Lawrencean, as probably the only medical professional in the room, people gotta come right now and tell you marijuana lead me to do crack. Marijuana led me to do fentanyl. But they call it a gateway drug. And it got that stigma because it was illegal. How many of those people tell me that they didn't smoke a cigarette first? How many people of those people tell me they didn't have a drink of alcohol first? Those, it's a drug. Aspirin kills thousands of people a year, and is a commonly-used drug. It's a drug. It is what it is. It's a new drug. Please don't shut the door on something that can create jobs.
I will ask for respect in the chamber. If you aren't able to respect the opinion of other people, I will respectfully ask that you walk out. You respect the opinions of everyone in this chamber, okay? You may continue.
That can create jobs, new industry. Please, I ask you to table it until we actually get some more information, because I believe this could actually create jobs and create the stigma away from Lawrence. Lawrence, unfortunately, Lawrence gets a bad rap, a lot of stuff. We have the district court here that brings a lot of negative to the Lawrence, 'cause you hear Lawrence District Court. Andover's possibly gonna pass, pass it in Andover, and they're gonna turn the old AT&amp;T building into that industry. And those jobs will be in Andover, not in Lawrence. It is here. People are making money off it. The only difference is, we're not taxing it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Victor Javiz, pastor of Ebenezer Christian Church, 327 Heavis Street, and I live in 381 Chateau Street. Today, I will brief in my speech, because I know that you will do the good thing for us. And I will thank you for your unanimous support that all of you has given us in this matter the last time. And I'm sure that once again, you will vote in favor of other values. And I'm sure, again, you will say no to marijuana in Lawrence. No to marijuana in Lawrence. May God bless you.
Buenas noches, repetables concejales de nuestra ciudad de Lawrence.
Good evening, Councilors from the city of Lawrence.
Buenas noches a todos, mis hermanas y hermanos presentes.
Good evening, my brothers and sisters that are present.
Soy el diaco no Jesús Castillo.
Jesús Castillo.
I represent the pastoral dimension. Of the Catholic Christian Church. As a missionary for more than 30 years in the city of Lawrence. It is at this very moment. Una gran preocupación en mi misión pastoral.
Very worrisome in my mission as a pastor.
Al pasar por cada esquina de nuestra ciudad de Lawrence.
Walking through every corner of the city of Lawrence.
He podido observar un sinnúmero de jóvenes con pancartas.
I have seen many youth throughout, throughout the city.
Mendigando monedas.
Asking for money.
No es posible que nosotros podamos continuar en estas condiciones sin poner un paro a esos vicios que están destruyendo a nuestra sociedad.
We have to put a stop to all this, to this cycle that is consuming our city.
Hay muchos tentaculos que quieren abarcar y destruir a nuestros jóvenes.
There are many things that wants to come and destroy our youth.
Y creo que este es el momento para que nosotros unánimemente tratemos de bloquear aquellas cosas que están dañando a nuestra juventud.
And I think it's time for us to unite and stop all those things that are destroying our youth.
Le pido de misericordia de Dios a ustedes, señores concejales.
I ask you for mercy of God, Councilors.
Que salvemos a nuestra comunidad de Lawrence.
That we rescue our city of Lawrence.
Nosotros hemos puesto la confianza en ustedes al elegirlos.
We have put our trust in you guys by electing you.
Y esperamos de ese gran deseo que ustedes tienen de que nuestra ciudad sea próspera.
And I know that it is your wishes that our city be prosperous.
Diciendo no a la comercialización de la marihuana.
Saying no to marijuana.
Estamos sufriendo las consecuencias de aquellas drogas que han sido autorizadas y comercializadas en la sociedad.
We are suffering the consequences of those drugs that have been legalized in our society.
Y están destruyendo la salud, tanto espiritual como corporal de todos los humanos.
And it's affecting our health spiritually amongst us humans.
Y nada humano como misionero me es ajeno.
Nothing as humans, I'm sorry, can translate that.
Nada humano me es ajeno como misionero.
No humanly thing is opposed to me.
That's a hard one.
Por tanto.
Therefore.
Nosotros unánimemente pedimos.
Therefore, us unanimously ask.
Que haya cero marihuana en nuestra ciudad.
There will be zero marijuana in our city.
Necesitamos una sociedad justa, limpia, y libre de todo vicio.
A sentence just in three of all addictions.
Reciban bendiciones de Cristo Jesús, nuestro señor y Salvador. Muchas gracias.
We send blessings to my Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you very much.
Buenas noches.
Good evening, Council.
Mi nombre es Pastor Luis Piñero.
My name is Pastor Luis Piñero.
Vivo en el 284 High Street here in Lawrence.
I live on 284 High Street in Lawrence.
Y estoy aquí representando la Asociación de Ministros Evangelicos Amedal del Valle de Merima.
I'm here representing the association of Amedal here in Merivaque Valley.
Estamos hablando de una agrupación de muchos pastores de varias iglesias que representaba muchas personas y muchos votos.
Representing coalitions of churches and pastors that holds a great, a great influence in votes.
Y también estamos aquí representando a un grupo de padres que en esta noche están con nosotros, aquí sentados, y que no pueden venir aquí porque no tienen tiempo. Pero a eso estamos nosotros.
I'm also here representing, I'm also representing a group of parents that are present in the audience that are not able to come forth, but he's also representing those individuals.
Y damos gracias por la oportunidad que nos dan de poder presentarle la realidad de los problemas que hay in Lawrence, por si ustedes no lo sabían.
Also, I want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to come forth with our issues and problems before you.
La ciudad de Lawrence está llena de drogas por todas partes.
The city of Lawrence is saturated with drugs all over the city.
Como lo sabemos nosotros.
How do we know this?
Fácil porque tenemos muchas personas a las cuales dirigimos, y vienen hacia nosotros y nos cuentan de todos los problemas.
We know this 'cause a lot of the communities come, and families come to us, us being pastoral leaders, with their issues and problems.
Se me sorprende sobre manera que estemos aquí esta noche luchando y tratando de convencer a los concejales de que no aprueben otra droga, ¿ustedes el colmo?
It's hard to wrap my head around, hard to wrap my head around the fact that we have to come here before the council members to convince you of the issues of saying no to marijuana.
No voy a seguir hablando mucho porque otros vienen a hablar, pero sí quiero pedirles en el día de hoy, y no solamente pedirle, como le dimos nuestros votos para que ustedes nos representen, nosotros exigimos y demandamos que aprueben no a la marihuana in Lawrence.
I wanna make it, make it short to give other people the opportunity to speak. As you've gotten our votes, we also trust that you will say no to marijuana in Lawrence. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilors of Lawrence. My name is Gigi Martinez, and I live on 27 Thornton Street, Lawrence, Massachusetts. I'm here as a mother. I'm here as a young person. And I'm here because I have a concern. I believe people who voted yes didn't think about the consequences. We are not thinking about how we're gonna deal with the new generation. We're not thinking about how secondhand smoking is gonna affect our children. We're not thinking about that when we walk into a building, the person in the first floor is smoking 24/7, the person in the second floor has asthma, and the person in the third floor has three children. We're not thinking about that. We're not thinking about the consequences of going to a baseball park. When I bring my kids, and I have two individuals smoking marihuana right next to my kids, they're not thinking about it. I want you guys to think, how are we gonna deal tomorrow, in the future, with, in a classroom, with hyperactive kids, normal kids, and kids who are all the way high because they've been smelling marihuana all day long at home? What are we gonna do? Are we gonna diagnose those kids with different medicines? Are we gonna have different diagnosis for those kids? Are we gonna divide classrooms? Are we going to divide classrooms? What's going to happen in the city of Lawrence? I believe the city of Lawrence already has problems. We already have enough. I think opening that door of selling marijuana every corner, it's going to not get... Keep talking about jobs. And I'm wondering, what kind of jobs? If you want a job, go out there, go apply. He can Google online and I believe he's going to find a job. I don't think we need to open the doors selling marijuana here in the city of Lawrence. We have enough. And as a mother, I have a concern. As a youth, I have a concern. I have a concern in my future generation. I have a concern of those people driving because it's been proven that marijuana affects the brain. So I'm concerned about those people out there driving. You know we have a lot of irresponsible teenagers, right? So what are we going to do with that? We do going to need more jobs because we're going to have, we're going to have like a police station in every corner in Lawrence if we do allow marijuana. And I'm concerned about it. I think we need to move forward for the best of Lawrence, not for the worst. So I think it should be a big no to marijuana, as a mother, as a citizen, and as a person that cares about the city of Lawrence. I want all the parents here tonight, all the people from different institutions and churches to think about, know what is happening right now, but what's going to happen from here to the future, to our new generation, what damage are we doing to our kids? To get drunk, you need to drink the alcohol. But what's going to happen to that kid that is being secondhand smoking all day long? Because what we have in this city, it's a lot of people that are very irresponsible and we know it. So if we do leave this gap open, I don't know what's going to happen to this city, but it's not going to be good. So please say no to marijuana. Thank you.
Buenas noches, miembros de la asamblea.
Good evening, city councils.
Todo el público general que en esta noche dedica este tiempo a este tema tan importante para nuestra ciudad.
Good evening to everybody who is dedicating this time to be discussed in the city.
Nos encontramos aquí porque somos testigos de cómo una minoría de esta gran nación ha impuesto leyes en contra de la mayoría solo por el hecho de que esa mayoría se quedó callada.
We are here tonight because the minority has made laws against what the majority people have requested.
Estamos aquí porque ustedes son más que un rostro para nosotros. Sabemos de su trabajo, de su cariño y de su gran compromiso por esta ciudad. Estamos aquí para apoyarle a un no a la marihuana.
We are here, we are here to say no to the marijuana. We understand that each one of you do a great job in this community.
Nosotros, hay muchas personas que por su negocio no entienden que todo dinero no se puede tomar.
This is a business that people just think about money, and money is not all.
Muchas personas quieren hacerlos saber qué bonito lo que feo, pero nosotros sabemos que la marihuana es el pasaporte a ese mundo destructivo de las drogas.
We all know that marijuana is like a driveway to another kind of drugs. It's a passport.
Si le damos ese pasaporte a nuestra gente hoy, mañana no nos quejemos del mundo en que lo hemos entrado. Así que no estamos para proteger, estamos aquí para apoyarlo a ustedes, a decirle no a la marihuana.
If you give that passport to the marijuana, we are here to support you, to support you to say no to marijuana.
Por último, una reflexión. Estuve hablando con unos mexicanos en el momento en que estaban los momentos de el muro en contra de su país. Esta persona me dijo, deja lo que construyan todos esos muros, que nosotros solamente duramos cuatro días sin pasarle droga y ellos todos se vuelan para acá. Que vuelen a otra ciudad, no en Lawrence.
He said that he was spoken to a Mexican and he said that if they do the wall across the border, that in four days they will return back to us for the drugs. It doesn't matter how big is that wall.
Gracias por este momento de decisiones. Ustedes, recuérdenlo, son más que un rostro para nosotros. Demúestrenlo que realmente le interesa esta ciudad. Demúestrenlo que a ustedes le importe el futuro de nuestros hijos. Demúestrenlo que ese dinero no es bueno que va a entrar a la ciudad. Gracias.
You are more than a face, you are more than a face to this community. Remember to say no to marijuana.
Buenas noches, señores concejales.
Good evening, city councils.
Mi nombre es Teófilo Aracena y ella es mi esposa, Sares Carraman.
His name is Teófilo Aracena and that's his wife, Sara.
Nosotros venimos a hablar en nombre de los esposos de aquí de Lawrence. Somos residentes de aquí de Lawrence por alrededor de diecisiete años.
They are residing on Lawrence for more than sixteen years and they are here to speak as husband and wife.
Hace alrededor de siete años nosotros tenemos dos hijos y unos de ellos, como consecuencia de la marihuana, hoy está sufriendo graves daños de salud.
About seven years ago, one of their kids started using marijuana and he suffered the consequence today.
Y es una situación que nosotros como esposos no se lo deseamos al peor de nuestro enemigo.
As couple, we don't decide anybody to go through what we're going through.
Porque son noches y días, semanas, años muy difíciles.
It has been days, nights, weeks, years, very difficult time for us.
Y hoy como familia, como esposo, venimos ante ustedes...
Today, we come in front of you as husband and wife.
Para pedir de que se le diga no al comercialización de droga aquí en Lawrence, específicamente la marihuana.
We come here today as husband and wife to say no to marijuana, to the commercialization of the marijuana.
Porque no queremos más familias destruidas y no queremos más jóvenes destruidos.
We don't want more family being destroyed and we don't want more kids to be destroyed then still.
Y tenemos un hijo de catorce años.
We have a fourteen-year-old.
Y no queremos que en el día de mañana corra la misma situación.
And we don't want him to go through the same way as our other child is going through.
Así que en nombre de todas las familias y esposos de aquí de Lawrence queremos decirle no a la marihuana.
In the name of the family, in the name of the family and the couples, wife and husband and wife and family, we are here standing to say no to marijuana.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
My name is Michael King. It's great to see you again, city council. I work for Massachusetts Family Institute and been working with churches in Lawrence on this particular issue. I want to draw your attention to an updated report that I brought in tonight. And I'm going to go through this quickly, but this really just points out the dangers to our youth when it comes to marijuana. This is put together by Amy Turncliff, a neurologist with a PhD. I want to point out that there's over 120 towns and cities in the state of Massachusetts that have already taken measures to opt out of recreational marijuana and the count is increasing by the day. The brain, our brains are not clinically developed until age 25. And you know how many, what percentage of the sale of marijuana in the state of Colorado is? Fifty percent of the sale is edibles. Who's eating edibles? It's our kids. And fifty percent of the sale of marijuana is edibles. I also want to point out that a lot of people make the point that there's a big tax incentive and money for the city. Well, if you look at the state of Colorado, there was a recent article where the amount that it sold for came down by forty percent in the state of Colorado. So the state is not seeing the type of windfall that it thought it would see because the prices are coming down. I also want to point out, if you look at that page, it's the third page, the highest percentage of people taking marijuana are age 16 to 17. So just think about when people got addicted to cigarettes. It was probably about 15, 16, or 17. If you look at the next slide, the younger you are, the more likely you are to become addicted to a drug. You see here, forty percent of those who begin drinking at age 15 will develop an alcohol use disorder compared to seven percent at the age of 21. So the younger you start taking it, the higher percentage of kids to get addicted. You've heard that today's marijuana is not the marijuana of the 70s and 60s. On the next page, you'll see that the THC levels are so much higher in today's marijuana than yesterday's marijuana. The next page, I won't go over this so much, but it just talks about the myths that we hear all the time. One of the myths is that marijuana is not addictive and clearly the evidence shows, as you see here, that it is. And if, and don't argue with me on that, argue with the New England Journal of Medicine. You also get the next page, potential longer-term effects of regular marijuana use on youth development. A lot of these consequences caused by marijuana affect our brains and cigarettes affected our lungs. So it's a very dangerous drug to our brain. Also, I just want to point out, from the New England Journal of Medicine, if you're looking at this slide right here, the New England Journal of Medicine says that they are very highly confident that marijuana is an addictive drug and leads to a diminished lifetime achievement. So if we're concerned about the kids in our school systems and we want them to get good grades and work hard, this is not a drug that's going to push them to overachieve. I want to show you this quick picture. A picture tells a thousand words. And we can see here how marijuana is marketed to kids, especially in the state of Colorado. The next picture quickly just shows that the THC is engineered to be eighty to ninety percent of the marijuana. You can see how highly concentrated it is. They're called dabs or wax. And a lot of times we find this in the edibles. You could take one bite of a brownie and be completely stoned. I don't think that we want to see, on the next page, I don't think we want to see these kind of advertisements coming to our towns and cities. In Colorado, it says here, "Stop by on your way up the mountain for all your recreational needs. Show your ski pass and receive a $1 joint." I don't think that's what we want to see in our magazines. This slide, and I'm almost done. This just shows what big marijuana is trying to do. They try to decriminalize it, then they try to pass it into medical, then they try to legalize it and commercialize it. And we can clearly see what the industry is doing. It's just like big tobacco. In the 50s and 60s, it was sold by medical doctors. Were selling us the idea that cigarettes were actually good for you. And in the same way, they try and get a foothold in our towns and cities by saying marijuana has all these great medical effects. But we got to realize that medical marijuana and recreational marijuana, it's all marijuana. And then lastly, in your time, you can read this quote by Dr. Ruth Pody that again, from a doctor's point of view, points out some of the dangers of marijuana. So I thank you on behalf of Massachusetts Family Institute. We are dedicated to strengthening and protecting the family in Massachusetts. And I hope with all these other wonderful people behind us that you will indeed vote no against pot shops in Lawrence. Thank you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Jessica Aquino.
Good evening, this is Jessica Aquino.
Y me gustaría hablar en esta noche en representación de toda la juventud.
She would like to talk about the youth.
Y digo de representación de la juventud porque en esta generación muchos jóvenes no saben ni siquiera la manera de expresarse porque están diliando con demasiadas confusiones dentro de ellos mismos.
Youth people are very confused. They're talking about a lot of different issues that they don't know how to relate to each other.
Y en realidad esta noche yo no pensaba que me iba a tocar la oportunidad de tener que dirigirme a ustedes. No vine con estos planes. Pero Dios tiene un plan para todas las cosas y sabe por qué hace las cosas de su manera.
Tonight, I wasn't here to speak, but God knows what he wants and that's why I'm speaking.
Y en mi consideración, yo pienso que darle un sí a esta ley en esta ciudad sería como darle un arma de fuego a un niño de tres años.
To say yes to the marijuana law is like giving a gun to a three-year-old.
Y quise expresarle este sentir y esta opinión en español porque quiero ser completamente clara y me gustaría que me entiendan.
I am speaking in Spanish because I want you to understand clearly what it is that I wanted to say.
Digo este ejemplo de que darle un sí a esta ley precisamente en la ciudad Lawrence es como darle un arma a un niño de tres años porque como podemos ver, como está aconteciendo con el pasar de los tiempos, vemos mucho problema de suicidio entre la juventud. Vemos mucho problema de que se matan entre ellos. Vemos mucho problema de pleitos y en las escuelas estamos viendo como los jóvenes no pueden desarrollarse ni siquiera en los estudios de la manera correcta.
We see in kids that they cannot develop themselves. They are fighting, they are killing each other, they are committing suicide because they don't, they not know how to solve the problems.
Y el problema no es solamente la marihuana, si se usa la marihuana, no. El problema es que los jóvenes, yo soy testigo de eso porque yo soy joven y me he relacionado entre jóvenes de quince, dieciséis, diecisiete años. Están constantemente tomando alcohol, lo mezclan con la juca, lo mezclan con diferente cosa. ¿Qué podemos imaginar si tienen la libertad de accesar a la marihuana?
I don't understand how, as you know, a lot of kids are using drugs. They're using alcohol, they're smoking juca. They are doing, missing so many things. If you open the door to another drugs, what's going to happen?
Y ha sido maravillosa la manera en que todos han expresado en esta noche su idea. Entiendo perfectamente bien que si nosotros queremos cambiar el mundo, no es haciendo lo mismo que hacen las demás ciudades. No es haciendo lo mismo que los demás entienden que nosotros debemos hacer.
If we want to change the world, we might, wouldn't be able to do it. But we can do something different, especially for our city.
Porque la única manera de ver algo diferente es haciendo algo diferente. So si nosotros queremos ver algo diferente en esta generación de esta ciudad, yo les recomiendo, como ustedes representantes de la misma, un no a la marihuana, absoluta.
I'm asking for a no to the marijuana. You are representative of this city. I'm asking you to please say no to marijuana.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Buenas noches, señores del consejo.
Good evening, everybody.
Quiero agradecer, mi nombre es Misael Barranco.
My name is Misael.
Barranco.
Barranco.
Quiero agradecer...
I wanted to thank...
...al concejal Maldonado.
To Mr. Maldonado.
Que inició esta idea.
That brought in this idea.
Quiero saludar a los que secundaron esta idea también.
I wanted to say hello to the one that seconded this idea.
Mis palabras son simples esta noche.
My words are very simple tonight.
Es tiempo de que Lawrence...
It's time that Lawrence...
...marque la diferencia...
Make a difference.
...en todo el estado.
In the whole state.
Ya esta ciudad...
This city already...
...no puede ser...
Cannot be.
...el asme reír...
The make laugh.
...de otras ciudades.
Of other cities.
Nosotros tenemos...
We have to.
Que si llamamos...
That if we call...
...esta ciudad...
This city.
...la gran ciudad de Lawrence...
The great city of Lawrence.
...tenemos que hacerlo notar.
We had to make a notice.
Es tiempo de que le digamos no...
It's time to say no...
...a la marihuana.
To marijuana.
Porque esta ciudad...
Because this city...
...necesita ser libre...
Needs to be clean.
...y necesita ser limpia.
Needs to be clean and...
De toda marihuana.
This city needs to be clean and free of marijuana.
Y yo le hago un compromiso públicamente a todos.
And I make you to make a commitment publicly.
Necesitamos su voto de que no a la marihuana.
We need your vote to say no to marijuana.
Buenas noches.
Good night, everybody. Señores concejales.
Palanca, palanca.
Señores concejales. My name is Luis Maria. I come and just representing brothers and sisters of Emmaus, Christian Catholic people. And we don't want to ask to vote... And we don't want to ask to vote for not to the marijuana, not only that, because you people have family, you people know that is against your own self to say yes, people. You be elected to protect the people from Lawrence, not to put our people down. I have a son that is a chief commander of the Coast Guard in this country. He never smoked one cigar of marijuana. I am a seventy-three years old man, I don't even know what is marijuana is. These people behind me belong to the same group I belong. These two, three persons that you sit inside there, stand up, belong to this Emmaus brothers and sisters. We vote to, and we know each other, but you, please say no. Don't accept more marijuana killing our kids. We don't need that. I know you people care. I know that. You are fathers, you are mothers, you care about your kids. I care about my kids. And these people behind, brothers and sisters of Emmaus, care about their own kids. We don't need money, dirty money, we don't need that here. We already have an alarm in the whole country, and you know that. Say no to the marijuana. We don't need more marijuana to be living. Thank you very much for listening to me. Thank you. God bless all of you.
Buenas noches para todos ustedes.
Ser en inglés, Spanish?
No, no, I just want to say in Spanish.
Buenas noches para todos.
Mi nombre es Virgilo Cáceres.
Mi nombre...
Vivo en el quince de la McCalliff Avenue in Lawrence.
Mi nombre es Virgilo Cáceres y vivo en el quince...
La McCalliff Avenue in Lawrence.
McCalliff Avenue.
Soy el presidente de la Asociación de Taxis de Lawrence.
I am the president of the taxis, Mary Mac.
No, Asociación de Lawrence, de taxi, de todos los taxis de Lawrence.
Oh, he's the president of all taxis of the city of Lawrence.
Y el presidente de la compañía de Mary Mac Taxis también.
I'm president of the Mary Mac Taxi Company.
Y yo sé que todos han venido con sus diferentes opiniones, los diferentes ministerios que han estado acá en esta noche.
A lot of different groups have come and presented to you.
Y yo sé que cada uno de nosotros tenemos un issue, tenemos un problema con lo que es la marihuana.
Each one of us has an issue with what it is marijuana.
Yo también soy taxista de la ciudad de Lawrence, recojo muchas personas, y he visto tantos niños que he tenido que dejar porque se juntan tres y cuatro en una casa a fumar y todavía no terminan el cigarro para irse a la escuela.
He has, as a taxi driver, he has seen a lot of kids smoking, and when they call the taxi, they all don't get to school in time because they are smoking.
Y quizá la marihuana, ellos comienzan porque eso se sienten high, se sienten un poquito bien, pero es un paso, como decía alguien su pasaporte, porque va, en un momento determinado, van a sentir que la marihuana no le hace ningún efecto.
At the beginning, they start like a joke, like, you know, to feel high, but after a while, they don't, they don't see the effects of the marijuana.
Y van a querer, van a querer experimentar algo más fuerte para sentirse todavía mucho mejor.
And they wanted to go through different opioid situations to feel more happy.
En la compañía de taxi, nosotros tuvimos que poner una división en todos los carros, y yo sé que ustedes, los concejales, lo saben todito porque fueron parte también de ese trabajo que se hizo junto con la alcaldia de poner las divisiones en los carros por los atracos que estaban haciendo en los taxis.
As you know, all the taxis, they got a division in the middle because, as you know, and you worked together with the mayor and the councilors, that they had to put a division due to the fact that they were, they were trying to get money and...
Sí, nos atracaron un par de veces muchos taxis, ya.
And attacked the taxi drivers.
Inclusivo hubieron muertos, hubieron taxistas que fueron matados, fueron, fueron muertos, encontrado muerto en su carro.
There were some taxi drivers that they were killed due to those kind of situations.
Y también son parte de eso para suplir sus vicios.
And they, they attack people because they tried to supply what they need to continue buying what they use.
Y yo te aseguro y creo que Lawrence puede ser diferente.
I am sure that Lawrence could be different.
Y yo creo que este trabajo no solamente de ustedes, los concejales, ni de la alcaldia tampoco.
This yes is not only for you, the councillor, or the mayor.
Sino de toda la ciudad, como está esta noche aquí, que estamos representando diferentes ministerios, diferentes comunidades, que se han unido nosotros para trabajar este problema que está sucediendo o que puede suceder en Lawrence.
We all together from the different entities that we are here tonight, we are ready to protect and work together as a team.
Solamente no está aquí representada la ciudad de Lawrence, sino también tenemos gente de Hebron, de Lowell, de otra, de otra ciudad que han venido a apoyarnos a nosotros porque queremos decirle no a la marihuana.
We have people from Lowell, from Hebron, from neighbors, that they are here to support us, to say no to marijuana.
Y yo sé que con la ayuda de ustedes, nosotros podemos conservar una ciudad más limpia y que la gente no mire de otra manera. Gracias, buenas noches, no a la marihuana.
His final word, he said that he knows that you guys are going to say no to marijuana tonight.
Good evening, members of council. It's a pleasure for me to be here tonight. My name is Rocky Peña. I'm a servant of the Corporal Christie Parish here in Lawrence, used to be Holy Rosary. And I'm worried about this, about legalizing marijuana. We can be against it, but people are going to use it anyways because it's, because it's illegal, it doesn't mean that they are not going to use it. Whoever wants to is going to keep on using it. But I came here in nineteen seventy-eight, I was eighteen years old, was a musician. I started to play in orchestra, I did it for ten years. I've seen it all on the street. I've seen people shooting each other, stealing from each other, begging for money. I, I used to lend money to the musicians because they needed to do what. They, they weren't going to tell me what they're going to do with it, but they went to use drugs. And I never used it, thank to the love of God. I survived that because the Lord called me in nineteen eighty-nine, and I said, "Yes, Lord, I'm going to serve you." Nowadays, last Friday, I graduated for the first five years of Christian classes because I want to be a better person. I want to live this world better than where I found it. And I know that Lawrence is a great city. I own a couple properties, and the other day, I had to get rid of a family on the second floor because the people on the third floor were getting high and they were alleged to it. The guy couldn't breathe. He said, "You have to do something about it." And what did I have to do? Get a councilor, come here, and get an addiction and spend money unnecessarily, you know? There's no need for that. We'll keep on praying, that you meditate, you go home, reach diamonds in your heart, and we're going to go inside the heart of Lawrence, not on the streets, because the streets are nice and clean now. Thank you for that. We love Lawrence. And this is not possible because I don't think people in September eleven were in the right mind to do what they did. People in Las Vegas were not in their right mind, they don't have God in their hearts or think about the other. Love other the way you like to be loved. Please, say no to it. I have two sons, one is a little attrition, and the other one, the oldest one, went to UMass Lowell. What did he do? Freedom of justice. Where is he working now? In Lynn Courthouse. Because, what does he want to do? Help the kids, help they want and need, they want their suffering because we're killing them. Thank you, Lord, thank you to all of you, and may God bless the United States of America.
How are you tonight? Good? That's good. It's good to hear. It's a long night. My name is Julia Silverio. I reside at six seventeen Haverhill Street in Lawrence. I am a business owner, a parent, a grandparent, a person who sees what's going on in our city, the same way that a lot of you and a lot of the people that have been here tonight see what's going on. And I understand, based on the reading, that you councilors have already, the, the public hearing is about the prohibition of the sale, the sale, operation, or cultivation of marijuana, which is a wise decision. But I think that all of the people that have come tonight before you just want to show their support for your decision. You're not alone. We're here to uphold that decision because we are against the sale or distribution of marijuana in our city, in any type, shape, or form. Our city needs jobs, however, not at the expense of sacrificing the young lives of our men and women in our city. The citizens of Lawrence have voiced their concerns when they voted no to the legalization of marijuana. That should have been a no-brainer. However, there are interests that want this to happen, and because in Lawrence, many times, people don't come forward to voice their concerns, a lot of things are approved and dumped into our city. All of you councilors, I am happy to say that I know all of you, and I know that you care deeply about this city, and you care deeply about the people that have come before you from the different aspects of life in Lawrence. It is time for other communities to step up to the plate and share in some of the issues facing our nation, the opioid crisis, particularly those which have been identified and statistically documented to have a large amount of users. If the problem stems from their core, they should be taking care of the issues, not us, not Lawrence. Lawrence has paid a high price with all of the dumping of everything unwanted in other communities that is brought to our city, and we have always just said, "It's okay, it's okay, we'll take care of it for you." I know that you have already made a decision to prohibit the sale and cultivation or any type of distribution of marijuana in the city, and I commend you for that. I understand that a lot of you have been involved in these races these past few months, and I, and I commend you because, as you know, we have all been there in other times, and I know the hard work that it takes to try to represent a community, especially when a lot of it is misunderstood. One of the things that I'd like to say is that the citizens of Lawrence are no longer dormant, and will continue to address the needs of our city, and particularly the needs of our young men and women, our children, who are waiting and watching to see every move that we make to protect their interests. Regardless of the bad rap our city gets, we are a city of hard-working families who care deeply about the future. And in, in that, having said that, I want to thank you again for considering this issue of the utmost importance to the citizens of this community. Thank you, I know you will vote your hearts tonight, based on the, on the publication of the, of the item on the table, and let's work together to continue to move the city forward. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council. My name is Anna Habier, and this evening, I come before you to speak on behalf of the item, which is the local option to prohibit the sale of recreational marijuana. Lawrence has been my hometown since the age of nine, and throughout the years, I have learned to wear different hats in this community. As a facilitator for Time For Change Support Group, I come here as an advocate for those who perhaps are afraid to express their concerns of having these marijuana shops in our community. I have heard many concerns, and I strongly agree that allowing recreational marijuana dispensaries in our city is a big trigger to the people that are suffering from this sickness. These are very vulnerable individuals who are working very hard to overcome all this, and they are trying to move forward ahead in, in their lives. One important fact that I must share is that I am told over and over again that the average person started off smoking marijuana and has escalated their way to very heavy drugs such as cocaine, heroin, just to mention a few. As a facilitator on a volunteer basis, and for the past four and a half years, I find it very frustrating at times because I feel that I am, I'm trying very hard with these individuals so they can be productive in society, to be responsible adults, and then I see the other side of people just thinking of ways to make money out of this vulnerable population, without even thinking or caring about the consequences this will bring to our city. As an employee for the Lawrence and Methuen Community Coalition, as a substance abuse prevention coordinator, I will just say that it's very difficult to even use that word "prevention" without the help of you, you as elected officials. As an employee, I can try and educate our children, our youth, and our parents, but unless we as a community send the same message, how is it that we will even prevent it? Lastly, I would like to speak about me as a resident of the city of Lawrence. Like I mentioned at the beginning, I was raised here, and I also raised four children. In other words, this is my city. I will continue to invest in it. It is time we all invest in our city. No one else can care more about our city than we ourselves. I live here, I go to church here, I work here, and there's no one else that knows better what is best for our city than us people that are invested in here. Please vote in favor of this item 286, which is prohibiting the sale of recreational marijuana. I will keep it short tonight because I know the community has come out, you have heard each of their concerns, and I am sure you guys are wise enough to vote in favor of this item. Thank you and have a good night.
Buenas noches, queridos hermanos y hermanas.
Good evening, councillor, good evening, brothers and sisters.
Soy Adela.
My name is Adela.
Yo pertenezco a Santa María de la Sanación, Iglesia Cristiana Católica.
I belong to a seminary church.
Yo no iba a hablar, pero no puedo quedarme callada.
I was not planning to talk, but I cannot stay quiet.
Nuestro párraco dice siempre, tenemos que ser parte, o somos parte de la solución o del problema.
Our pastor always say that we are part of the problem or we are part of the solution.
Nosotros estamos aquí porque queremos solución.
We are here because we want solution.
A un problema tan grande como es la marihuana y cualquier tipo de droga que hay en nuestra ciudad.
We are here to solve a problem like the marijuana and other problems in the community.
Ustedes concejales no están aquí solamente porque le dimos un voto.
You councilors are not here because we voted for you.
Tenemos que estar muy seguros de que están aquí las autoridades porque Dios lo ha querido.
We have to understand that you, all of you are here because God had decided to have you here.
Y la mirada de Dios está sobre ustedes y sobre cada uno de nosotros.
And the eyes of God are on all of us and especially on you.
Cada instante de nuestras vida Dios nos está mirando y sabe lo que hacemos día y noche, lo que pensamos cuando nos levantamos, cuando nos acostamos, lo sabe todo.
God knows everything, and he's watching from the day to dawn. He's watching to see and seeing what we do.
Y podemos hacer muchas cosas en esta vida.
We can do a lot of things in this year.
Podemos ser orgullosos, humildes, podemos ser prepotentes, podemos buscar a Dios o no.
We could be nasty, and we could follow God.
Pero sí de una cosa estamos seguros.
Something that we all sure about.
Al menos nosotros los cristianos.
Especially us the Christians.
Que al final Dios nos pedirá cuentas.
That at the end, God will ask you for what we have done.
Como autoridades, pedirá cuenta las autoridades de el rol que desempeñaron.
As authority, God is gonna ask you question about the role that you have played in this.
Como padres y madres también nos tomará, nos pedirá cuentas a nosotros como padres y madres.
As parents, he also are gonna ask us for our, for the things we do.
Y una cosa así, por lo menos en nuestra parroquia.
One things at our church.
Nuestro parroco dice esto y es muy interesante para mí.
Our pastor say this.
No depende de los políticos, depende de los padres y las madres.
Do not depend on politicians, depends on parents.
Especialmente.
Especially.
Claro que nosotros contamos con ustedes.
We count on you.
Son nuestros representantes.
You are our representatives.
Son la voz de aquellos que no pueden hablar.
You are the voice of those who are silent.
Yo formo parte de un equipo de coordinación de la adoración perpetua en nuestra parroquia.
I belong to a group of adoration of perpetuation in my church.
Y en nuestra capilla,
And our chapel.
Soy una testigo.
I'm a test, a witness.
De todas las madres.
Of all the mothers.
Que llegan a cualquier hora de la noche.
That they get there at any time of the night.
Con un mar de lágrimas.
Crying.
No encuentran salida, no encuentran qué hacer con el problema que tienen con sus hijos por las drogas.
They don't find solution to the drugs additional they kiss.
También jóvenes que llegan.
And young people that get there too.
También con lágrimas.
They also crying.
Porque ya pasó lo de ver la curiosidad, si esto es bueno, si no es bueno, qué puede suceder. Ya pasó esa etapa, ahora están viviendo la frustración.
Because they went from one stage to the other, and after getting to know what it was, now they are in the frustration of living that life.
Ahora son enfermos que dependen de nosotros.
They are sick people that depends on other people to take care of them.
Y de nosotros también depende tener gentes sanas.
It depends on us to have healthy people.
Yo no sé, me imagino que ustedes también son padres y madres.
I imagine that you are parents too.
Por lo menos algunos lo serán.
Or maybe you are going to be.
Si yo miro a los jóvenes en las calles.
If I see the young people on the street.
Yo debo de pensar en mis hijos.
I have to think about my own kids.
Qué espero yo para el futuro de un hijo mío.
What do I hope to get from my own children?
Los que tienen hijos, piensen ustedes también. ¿Cuál es el futuro que quiero para mi hijo?
You, the hard children, think about what it is that you want for your kids.
Y lo que tú quieres para tu hijo, que me imagino que es bueno, déselo para los demás.
What do you want for the goodness of the other kids? That's what you want for your own kids.
Los muchachos que están en las calles envueltos en las drogas.
The children that are on the street using drugs.
Hablan de nosotros.
They talk about us.
Hablan de las autoridades.
They talk about authorities.
Hablan de cada padre y de cada madre.
They talk about parents and mothers.
Y un día.
And one day.
Dios.
God.
Y la sociedad futura.
And the future society.
Nos van a pedir las cuentas.
They're gonna ask for what we did.
Ojalá.
I hope.
Que ellos.
That.
Puedan agradecernos algo.
That they can be thankful.
Que día en el futuro.
That they stay in the future.
Esa ciudad decidió un día.
That this city, one day, decided.
Decir no a la marihuana, de ninguna droga.
To say no to marijuana and any other drugs.
Le agradecemos a esa ciudad, a esa gente de ese tiempo.
They will be thankful for this city for making that.
Que hoy tenemos hijos sanos.
That we all have healthy kids.
Familias unidas.
And family together.
Porque no es solamente un muchacho que anda en la calle.
It's not just one kid wandering around.
Es una familia desintegrada.
It's a family disintegrated.
Es una familia que perdió su horizonte.
It's a family that lost the horizon.
Yo estoy hablando aquí.
I'm talking here.
Especialmente.
Especially.
Por esas madres y esos jóvenes.
For those fathers and those young people.
Que no están aquí.
That are not here.
Que lloran.
That they cry.
Que oran.
And pray.
Y que han perdido la esperanza.
And they have lost hope.
Vamos a darle una buena noticia.
Let's give them a good news.
Nosotros tenemos esperanza en ustedes. Dios también tiene esperanza en ustedes.
We have hope in you, and God has hope in you too.
No lo olvidemos.
Do not forget.
Daremos cuentas.
We have to be witness.
De cada acto de nosotros en este tiempo.
Of everything that we have decided to make.
Que Dios les bendiga.
Blessing for you.
Abundantemente y a cada familia.
To every family in this city.
Digamos sí.
To say yes.
A una sociedad sana.
To a healthy society.
Íntegra.
Integ.
Que luchemos juntos.
To work together.
Yo soy una.
I am one.
Y otros más.
And others.
Que estamos llamando.
That we are calling.
A las madres. Que no debemos seguir tranquilos llorando solos.
We cannot be crying by ourselves.
Que tenemos que luchar.
We have to work together.
Hoy estamos.
Today.
A favor de ustedes.
We are in your favor.
Dependiendo.
We are depending.
De sus decisiones.
On your decisions.
Depende también.
And also.
Nuestra respuesta.
Our answers.
Ténganlo por seguro.
Be sure.
Esperamos lo mejor de ustedes.
We hope the best for you.
Pero tienen que portarse bien.
You have to do a good job.
Porque nosotros mismos.
Because we.
No queremos tomar decisiones por nosotros mismos.
We don't want to take decision by ourselves.
Las madres.
The mothers.
Somos.
We are.
La más afectadas.
The most affected.
Somos la que más lloramos.
We are the most crying.
Por nuestros hijos.
For our children.
Somos además.
We are.
Las que más los amamos.
The one that loved them the most.
Y por ese amor tan grande.
And because of that love.
Que le tenemos a esos niños.
To our kids.
Y a esos nietos.
To our grandkids.
Nosotras vamos a seguir luchando.
We are going to continue to fight.
Y Dios está con nosotros.
And God is with us.
Que Dios les bendiga. Gracias.
Good evening, everyone. So, I'm Jose. I've been here in Lawrence for already like two decades. And I'm a AGN in one of the Hilton property. I don't think many people can be wrong about it. All I can say about it is I think Lawrence has a great future. And if we have cities and states already made that decision, why not us? Thank you very much.
Good evening, councilors. And I thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. Tonight, I'm gonna be very... My name is Davi De Jesus. And I'm gonna be very brief. I come to you as a father of two. I've been in the city since 1989, so I go a long way. And I honestly never, never, in a million years, thought this day will come, that we will be facing this type of question, like, do we want to legalize the sale of marijuana in our city? It is frightening. It is alarming. It is scary that my kids are born into this type of environment that we're facing today. It is very, very alarming that my kids will grow up and they have this option to walk down the street and buy whatever they want and smoke a blunt, do whatever, just have that option on the table. As a father, I have educated my kids, my children. As a parent, I am highly concerned that the peer pressure might deviate them to do things that I didn't teach them as they were growing up. Kids are like sponges. They take whatever we offer them. They take whatever we bring to the table. I have done my part, but what is their options? What are they gonna choose when they grow up? And we stop and think, okay, maybe, maybe, you know, they're gonna have this decision when they're 21-year-old. Let me break some news. No. It starts as early as, who knows when? 10-years-old, 11-years-old. And it was alarming what the taxi driver was saying earlier. That he has to wait outside while the young kids that are heading to school to finish up their blunt, to finish up smoking, to heading to class like that. It is highly, highly alarming that we're facing this today. And never thought in a million years we will be debating this, we will be talking about this in front of the city hall. So as a father, I am very, very worried. I myself watch the news every day. That's the first thing I do. When I wake up at 6:00 in the morning, turning the news. It is so sad that every morning when I turn on the news, I am waiting for that breaking news. Every single morning. 10-years ago, I'll be shocked on anything that I saw on the news 10-years ago. If I saw a murder, I'll be like, oh, look what happened. Oh, look at this, this is... Now, it's normal. It's normal. This is a norm. It is just crazy that we're here debating, do we want to sell marijuana in our streets? It is just insane that we have this on the table. But let's face it, hey, it's out of our hands now. It's all legal. Now everybody can go outside and start smoking. What are we gonna do now? What I want to bring in here and what I want to... The point of what I put across is that... Is that, let's make it harder. Let's make it harder. Let's tell our young people, because it's not, it's not, it's not the majority that are buying smoking weed. It's not, the adults already have their own mindset. But it's the young people, the 10-years-olds, 11-years-olds, the 12-years-olds, the 13-years-olds, that they're smoking, the 16-years-old, 17-years-old. Let's make it harder. Let's tell them, hey, you know what? You wanna smoke some weed? You wanna smoke some weed? Go get an Uber and drive down to whatever other city you want to, but not Lawrence. And I say, let's take an Uber because that brings out a point. They're not even of legal age to have a driver's license. They're the ones that are smoking, the majority of them. You'll be surprised. So what do we want? We don't want our young people smoking weed? It's gonna affect their brain. It's gonna affect their thought process. So as a father, as a father of two, I am highly concerned that this may come to pass. Me walking down the street about a week after it was legalized, after you can go ahead and smoke whatever you want, just walking down the street for about four blocks, in every block, I was actually getting high myself. Without smoking. Without smoking, I'm getting high as I walk because I have no option now. I'm with my kids, walking wherever, and they have to breathe in and breathe out that smoke. We have no choice now. Now we have to just face reality. This is the new world because the majority of the residents of Massachusetts have voted that, hey, we want this. So let's bring it up to the table. And they all voted. But I thank God that the City of Lawrence, the majority, said, "We don't want this because we face this problem. We have enough problems. We have enough crisis." So, and the other thing is that I work at this place, this highly-known company, I'm not gonna say the name. And one day, there was a conversation. And it is so sad, as a resident of Lawrence, and I don't know if any of you, if anybody here in the audience or anyone can hear me, can relate to this. They were having a conversation, and at one point, somebody said, started mentioning Lawrence, that they had to go across Lawrence, they had to drive through Lawrence in order to get to point B. From point A to point B. I don't know if they were coming from Haverhill all the way to Lowell, whatever city. And one of the comments, a lady said to the other one, said, "I don't think you want to drive through Lawrence. You don't want to drive through that city because that's dangerous. Go around, go through the highways. Don't drive through the streets. Don't drive through the streets." I don't know if anybody can relate to that, that our city has a bad reputation in the state of Massachusetts. It is. I am being truthful. I've been here, and I repeat again, since 1989. It wasn't that bad back then. I remember that. I was a child. But now it's like getting worse and worse and worse. Okay, now let's legalize this. Let's legalize that. It's okay if you try this. It's okay if you try that. What's gonna come tomorrow? Have you ever thought of that? Hey, if we bring this and put it in paper and sign it and stamp it, what's the next step? There's no stopping. There's no stopping, nothing, nothing. Right now, right now, nothing shocks me. Nothing surprises me. But at least, at least, let's be an example because all eyes are in Lawrence right now. Believe it or not, the media was here. Telemundo was here. Some newspapers were here. And all eyes are in Lawrence, and they're gonna be judging us. I believe in their mindset. The majority are like, hey, haha, this is where we're gonna get all weed. We're gonna drive through Lawrence because they're gonna legalize that completely. We're gonna drive through every corner and just buy it all legal. We're gonna drive to Lawrence, because they're gonna legalize that completely, we're gonna drive through every corner and just buy it all legal. No, let's stand up and say, no, we don't want this in Lawrence. Let's be a prime example to the communities, to the cities, in this state. Yes, there are crime in the city of Lawrence. You see them everywhere. But when I turn on the news, it's always another city where I hear about a shootout. Where I hear about a shooting or a murder or something. You know what I mean? The city of Lawrence is not as bad as they describe it to be. It is not, it's not. If it were, I would have been in La La Land right now, I would have been in Methuen, I would have been in Andover. I have two kids here, and I've been here since nineteen eighty-nine again, and I haven't moved out. Because I feel safe as an adult, I feel safe to a certain degree. But now, we're debating, do we want to legalize this? Do we want to bring it to the table? Do we, do we, do we want to put that option on the, on, on, on the table for anybody to go and grab and buy and purchase? To finalize and to make my point, I was giving a, a group of, uh, young people a ride just recently. I was giving them a ride from another city to the city of La, to the city of Boston. One of them texted me and said, hey, um, do us a favor. Because one of the girls here, it's her birthday today. Can you, and they were all minors, they were like sixteen, seventeen-year-olds. Can you, can you go ahead and, and buy us some alcohol? We'll give you the money. This is the same thing that's gonna happen if we go ahead and legalize this. And I, of course, I said, no. Of course, I said, no way. Because it's my, my freedom, you're gonna put my freedom online. I can go to jail for this. So, just to wrap it up, I'd say, hey, it's already here. It's already here. Anybody can go and smoke it. Unfortunately, we're gonna have to be high sometimes because we just drive down, down the street, we have to smoke this. But hey, let's make it harder. Let's make it harder. Let's make them go out of the city and buy their weed. Let's make it harder and have them move out to whatever state and buy their weed, not in Lawrence. Let's say no to marijuana.
Well, I'm here as a father today. I don't know how many of you guys walk the street of Lawrence.
Your name for the record, please.
My name is Andy De La Cruz. Andy De La Cruz. I'm here as a father. And I don't even know how many of you guys have walked the street of Lawrence. I've been here for eighteen years in this town. I own a property on Thirty Crossby, thirty-two, thirty-four Crossby Street in South Lawrence. And sometimes, I have been going to the park and some people are smoking weed. And I have to take my two daughters, one is six years and the other one is three, because I can't beat over there. So today is the time when we have to think about our generations. We have to think about our children's. How are we gonna be facing that in the future? If we accept this now, what is the next level? They're gonna say, okay, we need cocaine. So we have to stand out tonight and say no to marijuana. Thank you.
Muy buenas noches, señores concejales. Mi nombre es Mercedes Abreu.
My name is Mercedes Abreu.
Residuo en la ciudad de Loreen por muchos años.
I've been in the city of Lawrence for many years.
Trabajo para manejo buses escolares muchos años en la ciudad de Loreen. En la ciudad de Loreen.
She works in the city of Lawrence for many years, driving bus?
No sabe cuánto me apena por la mañana, las seis de la mañana.
It is, it is very sad that every morning, six in the morning
Cuando paso en el McDonald's de la ese y veo un alguien.
And I would drive by the McDonald's on Exeter Street and I'd see someone
Cayendose.
Falling.
Porque tiene algo.
Because he has something
En su cuerpo.
In their body, in their system.
No sabe cuánto oro por esa, por esa, por esa juventud.
I pray so much for these young people.
Nada más le pido a ustedes qué esperanza.
And I ask you guys, what, what hope?
Me dan con ese niño que tengo ahí de trece años.
That I give it, for this child that is only thirteen years old.
Qué esperanza le dan a todas esas madres que trabajan como yo y sacan su familia adelante.
What hope do you give all these mothers that work like I do and give, trying to bring their kids to move forward?
Qué esperanza no dan si dejan entrar el enemigo en nuestra ciudad.
What hope do you give us if you bring the enemy to the city?
Nada más quiero decir, oremos.
Let's just, I'm just gonna say, let's pray.
Se están viendo los últimos y está escrito en la Biblia.
We're seeing the last, and it is written in the Bible.
Saben de dónde vengo, de la iglesia de orar, cuando supe que estaban haciendo esta campaña, le dije a mi hijo, camina porque tengo que estar ahí.
I was praying at church and I said, you know, watch out, let's go, because we have to be there.
Porque por estas madres que están así, yo puedo hoy mañana si le dan el paso al enemigo. Está llorando como están esas madres y no quiero hoy mañana ver a mi hijo, ver cómo yo estoy sufriendo cuando veo a alguien que anda cayéndose en la calle.
Because just like those mothers that are crying, I don't want to see my kid and, and I don't want to be the one crying myself.
Por favor, no a la droga, pase buenas noches y Dios los bendiga.
Please, no more drugs.
Good evening, um, councils and everybody. I'm very nervous. My name is Aida Soriano. I have lived in Loreen for seventeen years. And I'm a clinical independent social worker, I worked in the city, um, for fifteen years. Um, and I'm gonna give my opinion as a clinical social worker and also as a mother of two children aged nine and five, who just took it home and came back here, because this is a very pressing, important issue for me. Uh, in my opinion, also as a homeowner in the city of Lawrence. I have seen through my experience as a clinical social worker how, um, how the drugs and have have prevented and has, um, done so much damage to our youth and our young people. In my experience, those cases that I have been able to, to walk in the lives of those individuals that have suffered from using drugs, um, they didn't start with cocaine or heroin. They started with marijuana. The same case I saw when I had to, when I worked at a nursing hospital in the emergency room doing the psych evaluations. Many cases of them also starting using marijuana, no hard-core drugs. Also, as a homeowner, we know that any city that has high crimes, the value for the homes decreases, the values. Therefore, we don't want that garbage here in our city. As a mother, I don't want my children or the children of Lawrence or the children of nearby cities to be affected because we here in Lawrence are embracing the fact that we are opening and supporting the commercialization of marijuana. So we, and the people of Lawrence, have voted for you to be here and represent their voices. The job that you have is because the people of Lawrence selected you to represent their voices. Therefore, we ask you to vote against the commercialization of marijuana. Thank you.
Good evening to, uh, all city council and Mr. President. I will try to take less than three minutes. It has been a long night, but it has been a long journey for a lot of us since last, um, election in November. Cardinal Sean O'Malley asked us to support the effort of many pastors and also in the Catholic Church and other religions, other traditions of faith to help work with this, uh, challenge of legalization of marijuana. And here in our town, you have seen, uh, you have heard. And I want to thank you for listening and for being so patient with us. Thank you. And as the first person who spoke tonight, who's sitting here, said, in November, the election spoke very clear. Fifty-eight percent said, no, we don't want to get involved in this business. And as a businessman, I would like to say, there's certain money that we should not touch. Hay dinero que no debemos tocar. Uh, finally, as people of faith who, who wants the best for our family, legalization of, uh, marijuana in our town is like giving a passport to our kids, to our, to go and travel in the narcotics, in the drug industry. So I want to thank you. And before, before we leave, uh, we're gonna pray always for you to continue to do a great job as a, as a representative of our city. And I want to ask everyone who's watching on TV to always pray for our leadership in our city. Thank you very much, thank you. God bless you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? Seeing there's none, public hearing is now closed. Councilors, what's your motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve has been made and properly second. Any discussion? Seeing there's none, up the discussion, Councilor LaPlante.
It's a great point, I just wanted to, um, one of the speakers was Gigi Martinez. She mentioned, uh, that she was going down in a park area and that she could smell marijuana. And I think it's important to reiterate that this council had a vote and the mayor signed into law an ordinance that prohibited smoking of marijuana in our public parks. And so if that happens, of course, that is against the law and should be reported. The second thing I want to do is I want to applaud, uh, a lot of the speakers, but, um, one person took a lot of guts to come up here and Stephen Gill, who's the vice chairman of the Board of Health. He, uh, he was the only person that spoke out tonight. And it's a very difficult thing to do, Council President, to speak out when it's overwhelmingly, obviously, a lot of folks on the other side. And so, um, I may not agree with him on the issue, but I applaud the fact that he came out here and spoke. Uh, when, and, and there's always two sides of the argument, and it was important that his side had been spoken this evening. So I was happy to see that he had the, the, um, the courage to come up here and make his points. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilors, any further discussion? Councilor Rodriguez.
I just wanted to clarify the vote. If we vote yes, means yes to the prohibition, right?
That is correct. Any further discussion? Before I call the vote, I do want to point out that former mayor Willie Lantigua is in the audience tonight. Uh, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will request a roll call, uh, even though I heard no, no, just for the record. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Council Vice President LaPlante.
Yes.
Council Alvarez Rodriguez. Noted. Council Maldonado.
Yes.
Council Ortiz.
Yes.
Council Abdu.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council De Peña.
Yes.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Vasquez.
Yes, and the motion carries.
Motion to recess.
Please get a motion to recess.
Motion to recess.
It's been made and properly second. All those in favors to recess, please say aye.
Aye.